Good evening and welcome to our Benicia City Council and mayoral candidates forum. My name is Gail Vaughn, past president of the local League of Women Voters and the coordinator for this event. Our co-sponsors for this forum are Benicia Vallejo American Association of University Women, AAUW, and Carquinas Village. The League of Women Voters is an organization of women and men that is nonpartisan, community-based, and is organized at the local, state, and national levels. Simply put, our purpose is to register voters, provide them information, and get out the vote. The League of Women Voters of Solano County does not support or oppose any political party or candidate. The purpose of the candidate forums is to allow voters an opportunity to hear candidates discuss issues, stimulate public interest in the election, and to provide the candidates an opportunity to engage with their constituents. Tonight, we have all of the candidates for city council and mayor participating in this forum. These candidates have been verified that they will attend and have agreed to the rules for participation with signed documents. Their views expressed this evening by candidates are theirs and not the views of the League of Women Voters. This candidate forum is being held as a Zoom meeting and is being broadcast live on YouTube while being recorded. If you're on YouTube right now, please feel free to put questions for the candidates into the chat box. Questions submitted will be screened and sorted for appropriateness, relevance, and redundancy. Questions of a personal or inflammatory nature will be discarded. These questions, as time permits, will be forwarded to the moderator of the event. The recording of this forum will be posted on the League of Women Voters Solano YouTube's channel with a link to our website. The copyright for this forum belongs to the League of Women Voters Solano County, which reserves all rights to the recording of this format. No portion of this content of this form of this format may be reproduced or otherwise used without prior written consent from the League of Women Voters. No portion of this recording may be used to promote or oppose any candidate or used to imply that the League of Women Voters endorses any candidate. If the recording of this forum is to be used, it must be used in its entirety. A virtual event like this takes a lot of planning and a lot of people behind the scenes. I would like to thank Niles Metters, League of Women Voters President, moderator Julie Hartford, League of Women Voters Vice President, Sandy Curry, Craig Patterson, Rami Mugh, Ally Dariel, sorry Ally, I always say it wrong, our timer Barbara Hausman, our chat manager, and Susan Newhouse, our technical coordinator and president of Carquinas Village. Our co-sponsors have representatives here as well. Janet Leventhal is the president of the Benicia AAUW, and Diane Kuchet is the vice president of Carquinas Village. Jen, would you like to give us a brief description of AAUW?
The American Association of University Women officially founded in 1881 is a nonprofit organization that advances equity for women and girls through advocacy, education, and research. Besides voter education and getting out the vote, our branch priority is selecting middle school girls for our one-week summer STEM camp. Girls are recommended by their seventh-grade science teachers, and if selected, receive a scholarship to our camp, which features women professionals as teachers and mentors. The camp introduces the girls to the many choices available in science and technological careers. This coming year, we plan a virtual week-long summer camp. Please contact us or your seventh-grade science teacher if you have a girl to recommend. We also have monthly meetings and events discussing current issues and other topics of special interest to the group. Members have the opportunity to join various interest groups or to form new groups. We have a website, beniciavalejo-ca.aaw.net, or find us on Facebook.
Thank you, Jen. Diane, would you like to explain the purpose of Carquinas Village?
Yes. Carquinas Village opened its virtual doors in April 2017. Now, we have over 100 members and over 60 volunteers in Benicia and Vallejo. A nonprofit 501(c)(3) corporation, Carquinas Village is not a place or a building. Rather, it is a volunteer-run organization that provides a range of supportive services to our senior members. Such services can bring peace of mind to our members and help to keep them comfortable in the place they call home. Also, we all need meeting, human connection, and engaging activities, especially during this stressful pandemic. To engage our members' minds, we offer a calendar of stimulating activities now taking place on Zoom. To read more about Carquinas Village, please go to our website, carquinasvillage.org, or visit us on Facebook. We hope you will find this forum informative and enjoyable. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you. Now, without further ado, let me turn this over to our moderator, Niles Metters.
Thank you, Gail. My name is Niles Metters, and I'll be your moderator for this forum, which is co-sponsored, as you heard, by the League of Women Voters, Benicia Vallejo American Association of University Women, and the Carquinas Village. I'd like to welcome the city council candidates who are with us this evening. Mr. Terry Scott, Mr. Trevor Mackinsky, did I pronounce that correctly?
It's all right. No one ever, it's Masensky, it's fine.
Masensky, okay. And Mr. Tom Campbell. All verified candidates were invited and are here this evening. We appreciate their taking the time to appear on this forum. This event is a forum, not a debate. The difference is that in a forum, each candidate will be asked the same questions. They will not speak to each other, but rather they will speak to you, the audience. We have asked the candidates not to refer to one another, and we ask they not mention endorsements or any particular affiliations, but to focus on what they will bring to the position of city council member. The candidates will be given two minutes for their opening statements and one and a half minutes to answer the questions. Following the prepared questions, we will ask questions submitted by our YouTube audience via the YouTube chat. For those questions, candidates will have one minute per question. The order in which the candidates will make their opening statements has been decided by the league and follows the order in which they are listed on the ballot. After their opening statements, they will be given the questions in an alternating order. At the conclusion of the question-and-answer section, candidates will make closing statements in reverse order. We've asked them to give you, the audience, a way to contact them should you have any further questions. And we will begin the opening statements with Terry Scott, followed by Trevor Masensky and Tom Campbell. Trevor, over to you.
Trevor or Terry?
Terry, go for it, bud.
Okay. Okay. Terry, I'm Terry Scott. Thank you to the League of Women Voters, Carquinas Village, for providing the opportunity for this public forum, which will most likely be the last time all of our candidates are together in a forum. I'm running for city council because I believe it's time to change the way we look at tomorrow's questions using solutions from yesterday. The answers of the past will just not work given our uncertain future. Turbulent times require answers to problems we never would have or could have expected. COVID-19 has shaped and reshaped the world. Now we must reshape the part of the world that means much, most to us, our citizens. My vision for Benicia speaks directly to the potential of our community. My vision for Benicia begins with the understanding that we are a historic small town, a small town that embraces small-town core values, a small town that respects its heritage and is willing to embrace change, a small town that needs to be financially stable, which enables all of us to enjoy this quality of special life we have here in Benicia, one that celebrates environmental stewardship, diversity, inequality, effective city governments, including strong safety departments. By now, some of you know me as a candidate. Some of you also know me as the Art Guy. I'm chair of the Arts and Culture Commission in Public Art. But I'm not just the Art Guy. I'm a futurist working for Fortune 500 companies. I spent decades in corporate America. I've managed teams of over 700 with a budget of over $1.7 billion. I've owned and operated a family business, small business. I'm a husband of 44 years, a father of three boys, have two grandkids. I've earned my undergraduate degree at Kent State University, and I attended the Tuck School of Business at Dartmouth. When I succeeded, I succeeded because of, I listened. When I failed, it was because of the failure. So I believe it's time for some bold new thinking, and I believe we need to turn to how we can look at things from a different perspective. Thank you.
Next is, this time, Trevor Masensky.
There you go. Good evening, everyone. My name is Trevor Masensky. I'm running for Benicia City Council to help strengthen the economic future of our city while maintaining fiscal responsibility, preserving our historic roots and quality of life, and ensuring that we can maintain a safe community that has access to great public education. I commit to representing Benicia residents with integrity, respect, and transparency with the hope that all those items actually invite additional civic engagement into our community. As a city commissioner, I've served in a number of different capacities and roles for our city. Currently, the vice chair on our planning commission. I've previously served on our Historic Preservation Review Commission, the Soul Trans Public Advisory Committee, and our Refinery Community Advisory Panel. The thing about these roles is they've actually helped me to understand a lot about our city and the challenges that we're going to be facing. A little bit about me personally, I'm a father of three kids, Drake Nash and Monroe. I'm a husband and wife, Kim, for over 13 years. I'm a local coach for both basketball and baseball. I'm a volunteer. I'm an urban planner, a college educator, and fortunately, I've actually been able to teach environmental impact assessment methodologies at UC Davis. I went to Davis for my undergrad, so go Aggies. I got a bachelor's degree in environmental policy analysis and planning. I have a master's degree from Johns Hopkins University in environmental policy. And in short, as an urban planner, I've dedicated my entire career to helping solve some of California's most complex challenges. So having close to 20 years in consulting with cities and counties all across the state, I hope to bring that experience right here to Benicia. Thank you and look forward to your questions this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Masensky, and next is Tom Campbell.
Well, I want to thank the league and the AAUW and the Carquinas Villages for having this forum. Hopefully, it'll be kind of fun. Over the years, I've started or been involved in projects that preserved our open spaces, improved open government, campaigned reform, and protected our climate. I voted against water rate increases and oil trains. I voted for helping small businesses, improving our roads, increasing Benicia's water supplies, protecting its air cooling, and even face masks. You know, I was on city councils to build the environmentally award-winning community center, the skateboard park, put in $13 million of solar panels to power the city's public works. I was also on council to help clean up the munitions in the turtle area so water is in, can be built. These are just some of the projects I've worked on. But for me, it's always been protect Benicia's finances. I help keep our services intact and bring Benicia back from the dot-com bus, the 9/11, and the 2008 recessions. After those recessions, I led councils to set policies to double our reserves, update budgets quarterly, not yearly, and approach spending more cautiously. This is my third major recession since being on the council. My goal for the next several years is to get us out of the COVID recession and bring us back to the life we had before the pandemic. As for degrees, I'm getting too much static about, you know, all the degrees I have. So let's just say I got a couple so that I kind of know what I'm doing when it comes to everything from basic sciences to business. And thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. In Benicia, our city council is responsible for legislative or ordinance matters and hiring the city manager and city attorney. All members of the city council are currently elected at large. We have 1.90 seconds, one and a half minutes per question for this. The first question is to Mr. Scott. How do you plan to address the health and financial effects of COVID-19 on our community?
Well, how am I going to do that? First off, we're going to need to rebuild the downtown. We're going to need to have an economic development plan that utilizes some of the unallocated resources that we heard in Tuesday night's city council meeting that we have funds. I think we need to set up a forgiveness loan plan for our local businesses. We need to also understand how we can use some of our amenities, such as the depot, put money into the depot so that we can have a destination down there using some of our historic values, talk to our tourism group, and also, one of the things that we have to understand is Apple, Facebook, and other dot-coms have decided that they are going to move towards a 50% remote worker workforce. We have everything, including an incredible school system, that those dot-comers are going to want to have as they are remote workers. We need to develop a plan to bring people into the community, to enjoy our community, so that they can spend during their 12-hour days. Millennials are on a 12-hour day, especially as remote workers. So we need to be able to build businesses that have the retail products that these millennials want. So it's going to be a combination of tourism. It's going to be a combination of remote workers and attracting them to realtors, and it's going to be an opportunity to talk about our history.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Same question, Mr. Masensky. Would you like me to reread it?
Please, if you don't mind.
How do you plan to address the health and financial effects of COVID-19 on our community?
So I actually see this as a three-part response. There's basically three primary things that we need to focus on. One is preservation. We need to focus on the preservation of our downtown businesses that are currently there. We need to look at coming out with a second round of boost grants with the additional funds that Mr. Scott had mentioned earlier. Additionally, we need to try to do more to allow new businesses to open. So whether that's a deferred business permit, deferral fee program, or pushing off fees related to building permits, we need to make sure that we can encourage people to invest in our downtown because our downtown is the lifeblood of our community. Expansion. We need to get more creative with how we can entice businesses to open. We're getting to the point where we're actually starting to have a few pop-up stores. We're actually migrating vendors from our farmer's market into brick-and-mortar operations, and they're surviving. We need to continue to do that. Beyond the economics of restructuring our civic government to actually be more efficient is going to be critical. We can't continue to have an expectation that we can receive all the services that we've come to enjoy without actually generating more revenue to pay for them. So we have to look to restructure and eliminate higher-level positions within our government so that we can actually have savings and pass those on to our community members to maintain and keep services.
Thank you, Mr. Masensky. Mr. Campbell, would you like me to reread the question?
I think I'm good on this one. I'll give it a shot. Anyway, we just went over this Tuesday night at the city council. We have a plan. We're implementing a plan. So we are going in, I think, the right direction. Basically, it boils down to is we have to have speed and consistency in responding to the businesses, and we have to be flexible with permitting rules. That's why we were able to do things like parklets relatively quickly, for example, downtown. And what it boils down to is you can't treat the downtown area the same way you treat the industrial park. Downtown, we can use basic monetary policy. We've already put $500,000 into downtown merchant and small businesses to help them stay afloat and to keep their jobs. And we can continue, and are planning on continuing, to put more money in there because we have at our disposal, not in small part because of things that I've done, we have $21 million to work with, $9 million reserves, $12 million in unassigned, you know, funds. So that part with the downtown and small business, we have it under control. Out in the industrial park, we do not have that kind of money to do the same thing. So what we have to do is we have to work on infrastructure improvements to help them in any way we can. That includes things like roads, broadband, 5G broadband, things like taking care of a water and wastewater problems they may have, and work on things like improving the transportation for employees, such as what we did when we did the bus intermodal station we just put in there a couple of years ago.
Thanks, Tom. Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Next will be Mr. Masensky. Benicia's population is diverse by race, culture, age, and economic status. What plans do you have to address the needs of all our residents and ensure equal representation for each of us?
Yeah, so I think the idea that the perception that we actually are, as far as communities within Solano County, we're not as racially or diverse as one might think. Our predominant population and demographics are still very much Caucasian leaning. Regardless of that point, it's not to say that diversion, pardon me, diversity inclusion doesn't matter to us. And as civic leaders, there's three primary things that I will absolutely make sure that we can do. One is elevating and doing outreach to make sure that all aspects of our community can actually have a voice in the conversation. The method of government in which the people come to the government asking for information is an old model. We have to do better in communicating. We have to utilize and leverage technology to get out and reach people because people that are working hard and into the middle of the night are working day shifts or night shifts, don't have the ability to come down to all of our hearings. The second thing is make sure that we have diversity and inclusion policies across all of our departments to ensure that there's appropriate hiring policies that can increase and bring in unrepresented populations into our civic government so that they have a represented voice. And the last thing is just making sure that we can provide an opportunity for everybody to actually live within our community. Housing is one of the largest barriers for people to come to Benicia because of the cost. So I'll absolutely be an advocate for housing within our community, whether it's market rate, senior, or affordable. We absolutely need to start developing our housing stock because there's a pent-up demand for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Campbell, shall I reread the question?
No, I'll take a shot at it, you know, because this is something we just recently were doing, and there was a lot of controversy about involved. What we're going to do as far as an equity and diversity manager, and that was one of the things that, you know, I got the council to go along with. We really don't want to spend $200,000 on something where we're the first one out there trying to figure out how to do things. So I divided it into three steps. First, we'd have a subcommittee hire an equity and diversity employee for about three months, come up with a plan, and we then go to equity and diversity report. When that report comes back, at that point, we know what we really need, what we are trying to accomplish here. And we can decide at that point whether we need to hire an equity and diversity employee or whether we do something the same as we do with the independent audits that we do every year with the city with finances. We could do the same thing possibly with equity and diversity, bring in an independent person once a year to look at how we're doing in solving these diversity problems. Benicia, you know, Trevor's right. It's not completely by any means diverse. 70% Caucasian, roughly about 12% Latino, roughly about 10% Asian, and 5% to 6% African-American. So it is heavily weighted toward, you know, Caucasian, and we have to take that into account so that we don't do any of these unconscious biases.
Thanks, Tom. Thank you, Trevor. And Mr. Scott?
Well, thank you. As Trevor and Tom both said, and I agree with them, that we say we are a diverse community, but as the demographics have been said, that we are heavily Caucasian. As I said in my opening, the most important thing that a city council member can do, the most important thing that you can do in business, is learn to listen. Not self-talk, but learn to listen. And I think that what we need to do is we need to be able to be understanding of all the needs of all of our community members. We have a lack of understanding at times of what other people are thinking. There is this unconscious bias. I do believe that there is this thing called unconscious bias. And we make some assumptions as a white person, an older white person in America, that we have an expectation. So I think that we need to understand how we can get inclusion by reaching out to the communities and giving them a forum in which they can communicate effectively with us as city council members. We need to understand how they can have equal representation on various committees and boards, how they can understand that the equity and diversity manager that Tom had talked about is absolutely right. We need to phase it in so we get an understanding of what kind of needs and issues that we have in the community so then we can prioritize them and then we can address them.
Thank you. Next is Mr. Campbell. How do you foresee the city improving its financial situation and maintaining its infrastructure? What steps would you take to diversify our economic base?
We have about a half hour. I could probably, you know, do that one for a long time. This is our problem in Benicia right now. We actually do not have as diverse of an economy as we would like by leaps and bounds. Valero, of course, is our biggest producer. 20% of our total revenue comes from Valero. We don't really want to have that kind of a situation. Valero doesn't want to have that kind of issue, situation. They want us to be more diverse, too. The one place where we can do this most is the Sino property, 500 acres outside of town. And that is where our real biggest chance for diversity, economic development, and to switch engines, so to speak, to go to something more along the lines of a business park, technological park, something away from manufacturing and heavy industry. That is where we need to go. The problem we have had so far is the Discovery Bay is Sino's construction company. They want to put houses out there. That is the only thing they've wanted to do for three generations now. We have to somehow convince them that doing a technological business park would be a much better way to go and would be much more lucrative to them. That would be the way we can truly diversify. Otherwise, you know, in the industrial park, it's just little bits and pieces where we try to do things, but we don't have a major impact. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Mr. Scott. Would you like me to reread the question?
No, I think I got it. Diversifying the economic base is a big issue. Obviously, we rely significantly on income and taxes coming out of Valero. One of the things that I hear all the time when I'm walking around downtown is that seniors want to age in place. They want to stay in the community, and they look at, where do I go when I can no longer walk up those stairs in the Aliantais down in the central core of the community? So I think that there are two ways to look at this. One, at both sides of the demographic profile. At the top end of the profile, where the Silver Tsunami is, which I have written extensively on, we need to be able to provide an opportunity for them to live. So I would look at that Sino property and say, can we put a mixed-use facility, a living facility, assisted living facility there for over 55-year-olds to then be able to stay part of the community that they have had two generations or three generations of, and have a bus and transit into the community as well as to the medical centers? In addition to that, at the other end of the spectrum, millennials, they are building a remote workforce. We have a number of buildings and warehouses that we could create informational hubs where these remote workers could come, they could work, they could be out of their house, they could not have to worry about the kids in the background. They could be socially distanced, and they could have access to high-speed internet and the accoutrements that they need to build a business.
All right. Thank you. And next is Mr. Masensky.
Yeah, so I think that there's two primary things that you need to do to try to stabilize our local economy. One is you got to go from an expansion perspective. Both Terry and Tom have talked a bit about the Sino property. That's one option. I, too, concur that we need to have a mix of uses out there. I've actually articulated my position that I believe it needs to be industrial along second. We need to have a commercial hub near where Chevron is. There needs to be high-density and multi-use type housing behind that with single-family residential behind that. And the reason why you need to do that is by simply just doing a business park, you're only really increasing the property tax contribution to the general fund, which is actually the predominant force within our existing general fund. So if you look at it from a financial management perspective, you actually want to have more either TOT taxes and/or retail taxes to try to offset some of the service costs. But additionally, I think you need to start looking, taking a hard look at some of our departmental structures. Right now, as everyone's aware, we had our city manager walk out the door. We have our chief currently running our city. I think this is an opportunity to step in and look how we can streamline and restructure some of our departments to reduce the number of directors which we have within each of our municipal divisions. In doing so, we're reducing the operational cost, and we're not going to see a massive service demand loss. So there are some minor tweaks that we can make to departmental positions, eliminating unnecessary staff and reassigning responsibilities to still deliver the same amount of services. And then in a worst-case scenario, you know, we have to look at reducing services if needed.
Thank you. I want to remind our audience on YouTube that you can enter questions in the YouTube chat for the candidates. In probably about 10 more minutes, we may have an opportunity to address some of the audience questions. Mr. Scott, the next question. What attributes or skill set will you be looking for when hiring a new city manager?
Good question. I think what we've seen from our police chief is the ability to have skin in the game. Someone who reaches out to the community, who is involved in the community, and who has access to the community. And the reason why I use that as an example is I think the failing of our former city manager was based on her inability to understand the nuances of our community. So one is a commitment to understanding the nuances of our community, to be able to communicate and understand the needs of the community. I would be looking for someone who has also small city, small historic city experience. One of the key attributes, obviously, of our community is so much of our historic pride. And I would like to have someone in place who understands how to deal with history, historical preservation issues, and how, at the same time, we can address some of the future needs that we have. I would also look at someone who would be able to understand what we possibly could do with a mixed-use property, as we have just discussed, at Sino. Someone who'd be able to deal with developers, recognize- Someone who'd be able to deal with developers, recognize the infrastructure needs, be able to understand what are the B U S D, the school system requirements that would be attached to it. So that someone who would be able to look big picture and be involved in the community at all aspects, not just manage the community from a nine to five, nine to six job.
Thank you. Mr. Masinski. What attributes or skill set will you be looking for when hiring a new city manager?
Yeah, I think first and foremost, your selection for your next set of council representatives, that's going to be one of the biggest tasks that we're going to be faced with, right? The city council and collaboration with our community members are going to have to identify and screen candidates to be our new city manager. So having done and purchased fitted on similar panels in the past for municipalities across California as a room planner, I feel I have a good track record in knowing what type of characteristics to identify. I think that there's four primary things that we need to make sure our next city manager has. One is you need, as Terry had mentioned, an experience with historic district or contributing districts within a downtown area. Benicia has a very complex historic downtown mixed use master plan, which is unique in and of itself. They need to have an advanced understanding of how that correlates to development within a waterfront. The permitting complexities that come with being in the San Francisco Bay area and working with the regulatory agencies, both within the Bay Area Quality Management District, the San Francisco Regional Water Quality Control Board, and B C D C are very difficult unless you've been there and done that. The third piece is obviously making sure they actually have operational management experience within California because it's a unique beast. I wouldn't be a big advocate of hiring a city manager from another state because of the complexities, not only of our municipal law, but our government code as well. And lastly, if we can actually have somebody that has experience with an industrial or manufacturing type town, I think that's going to be critical too. Because the user type that we have that primarily generates the majority of our property tax basis is of an industrial nature.
Thank you. And Mr. Campbell.
All right, well, I I've kind of been around for a fair bit of time in city government here. So I've been around for four city managers, two interim city managers. So I've seen multiple variations on the way things can be approached. For me, first of all, as Terry mentioned, they have to be connected with the community. You know, one of my favorites lived in Benicia, you know. One of them sort of lived in Benicia and everybody else didn't, you know. So they they need to be more connected with the community than they they sometimes are. They need to be a seasoned manager. And if you're a good manager, you can be given all sorts of different things off of every wall you can imagine, and you can still feel them. And that's really important. They have to also be a team builder because they're dealing with 200 employees that they have to have on the same page as they're on. And they have to have a huge amount of patience. Benicia is a tough town to work for, tough town to manage for. And worth noting, the city council has to be capable of being flexible and not hardened. They're going to have to be capable of dealing with the personality of the new city manager. And that's not always been the case. You know, one of the things which has to happen is it's a two way street. The city council has to be able to make modifications in their behavior to also keep the city manager happy. So those are just some of the things which both sides need to be capable of doing.
Thank you. And next, let's see, is Mr. Masinski. And the question is, what steps will you take to provide safe, high quality water to Benicia residents at affordable costs?
That's a good question. I think the affordability one is I'll be, I'll start right there and say it's going to be challenging for our community to have affordable affordable water rate structure simply because previous city councils historically had to sell off some historic water rights to actually try to put us in a better financial position. So the only way that we actually lower the per water rate cost is by trying to find efficiencies within the system. Now, you can find an efficiency within the system by developing a recycled water program, which the city has looked at. Unfortunately, there's a funding gap related to making that project actually happen. The second thing is you can try to make your our water rates a little bit more affordable. And people have talked about this extensively, basically taking our service charge fees and putting on our property taxes. There's a little bit of a savings to the community. But ultimately, at the end of the day, we're going to have to solve that problem ourselves. Our community has too much of a high income demographic to receive a lot of federal grant funds or loans to try to solve our failing infrastructure problem, which drives a massive portion of what the the water replacement costs are. As that, as it is, we actually have seen an increase in the improvement of the the water and the discharge in the San Francisco Bay. We actually all were as part of the briefing and we were able to see that we actually haven't had any violations within recent history related to our wastewater plant. And, you know, the water treatment that we have is of high quality. We just need to make sure that we can continue to capitalize and expand our community so that we can offset some of those infrastructure costs to hopefully reduce the bills that go to everyone.
Thank you. And Mr. Campbell.
This is another one that could go on interminably long on this. The 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 best way to describe it is, you know, we have a lot of problems which we've inherited from future or from past generations. For example, we shouldn't have put all our eggs in one basket to get the state water because what happened was it sounded good, $22 an acre foot is a really good rate. You know, but the trouble was we have to pay for all of the 17,000 acre feet of water which we contracted with the state, even though the state can turn around and say, you got to pay all of that, but we're only going to give you five, 10% of that amount. So that $22 acre foot, all of a sudden turns into $200 an acre foot. So at that point, you know, it's no longer such a great deal. But about 25 years ago, a city council put all its eggs in one basket and we have to deal with it ever since. So what we have to do is we have to re-diversify. We have to do things which we have been trying to do for quite a while. For example, we get some of our water from the Solano Irrigation District, some of our water from Lake Berry. Yes, we actually get some water from a water bank in the Mojave Desert of all places. And it lowers the amount we're actually paying per dollar of water. That's one thing we have to worry about. Another thing we have to worry about, we had a city council meeting where it went over the capital improvements that are needed in water alone, not kind of wastewater over the next 20 years. And it added up to $300 million, $300 million in 20 years in capital projects to bring us back where our deteriorating infrastructure has occurred. These are very tough, but never mind.
All right, thank you. And Mr. Scott.
Thank you. As Trevor and as Tom said, two of the three Ts here. Affordability in water is going to be the most difficult thing as we look as we look to the future. They're talking about within the next 10 to 15 years, water wars in California of how we get access to clean, affordable water, how we get access to raw water. One of the things that I look at is, is there the opportunity to do a closed loop system? I know that this might be expensive, but can we? We know that Valero uses a significant amount, almost half of the water coming in the pipeline into the city of Benicia. Is there a way that we can partner with Valero? Look at that wastewater that we're dumping into the bay, clean cleanly into the bay, but then loop it back into Valero so that Valero is using that for operational water into their system? So that means that we would be able to reduce significantly the amount of water that we're out there searching for because the water rates are just going to get up, get increased. In addition to that, from a consumer perspective, from a resident's perspective, I think the first thing that we need to do is we need to continue our freezing of the rates so that people can get an understanding of how they're going to be able to budget as we are searching from the city perspective of how to control and find other water sources. In addition to that, we do have the capital improvements, as Tom said, watching that city council meeting a few weeks ago. It's going to be very difficult to find new water sources and keep our capital improvements budget in control.
Thank you. And next, we'll start with Mr. Campbell. Just, let's see if I have it in the right spot. Here we go. Describe what proposals you would support to alleviate the shortage of affordable housing for all income groups in Benicia.
Well, this this is a tough nut to crack because Benicia doesn't want to grow. It likes and the residents like, I like, the size of the city we're at right now. 28,000 is a controllable city. The problem with that is if you're going to solve the affordable housing problem, you have to grow. You have to increase because there's just no room to put in the roughly 300 units, which the state says we need to put in of affordable housing. So you're stuck between a rock and a hard place. You have a set of residents that don't want to increase in size. At the same time, you have a problem which has to be done by increasing the size of the city. So the thing we've done, and we're not going to be able to, you know, meet the state's requirement, but we're trying to at least move in that direction. It seems like infill, you know, putting in multi-unit projects, doing things like accessory dwelling units. And there is one place up between the two mansions up on the hill in the port area where there is proposed a a potential project for older citizens, I suppose, like me. There would be up to a couple of hundred units, couple of hundred units of, you know, houses, apartments, condominiums up there. And, you know, if you take 200 units and put them up there, you know, all of a sudden those 300 units we need doesn't seem so insurmountable.
Thank you, sir. Next is Mr. Scott.
Thank you. I agree with Tom. I look at infill housing as a unique opportunity for us to go to multifamily housing. So we have a number of vacant lots around the the city. But we should be looking at if we can build two family or three family houses in that area as long as it meets the structure, as long as it meets the aesthetic value of the community. In addition to that, we have a large property on D Street. I know it's been bounced around. What we're, what are we going to do with that parking lot right now? Are we going to look at it as potentially a hotel? I would suggest that we look at that as single floor senior living that would be affordable housing. In addition to that, we've designated the Fifth Street corridor as an area where we're bringing in a coordinator to look at designating how we can build that area up for affordable housing. In addition to that, we have a unique opportunity to, with all the alleys and the garages that we have in our in our community to do accessory dwelling units and build that construction and encourage people to build. One of the things is it needs to have a commitment from the city. And part of that would also be in how we look at permitting, how we look at fees, how we create an ombudsman to support that development so that when builders are coming in, that they recognize that they will have a streamlined process into building affordable housing. So I think that there's all sorts of opportunities if we design a team for it.
Thank you. And Mr. Masinski.
So there's a, there's five primary things that we need to do to increase our community's ability to produce housing. The first is Terry had mentioned the SB two planning grant corridor along Fifth Street. On the planning commission, I worked hand in hand with our city staff to actually try to expand that area. The idea around that grant, which we got $150,000 for, is to try to streamline the future entitlement process so developers could walk in and that those lands would already be upzoned to accommodate a mix of uses, retail, commercial, and multifamily residential. The second is we need to create a policy structure which incentivizes infill redevelopment. So if you're going to go in for a building permit, but if you put two structures on the same lot, the rate structure that you'd pay would actually be less to incentivize people to actually utilize, underutilizing land. The third that we've talked about is related to Sino property. I don't need to go into much detail there, but that's a way that we can actually incorporate a decent amount of housing in one one fail swoop. The the fourth one is actually the arsenal. Those may not know, there's something called the Arsenal Specific Plan. There's actually a major opportunity for housing and development out there that was previously already evaluated. The challenge with it is actually the densities that were contemplated don't match the cost relative to the infrastructure and remediation. And then I guess the the third is making sure that we have a programmatic evaluation associated with our vacant lots that are in town because this next council is going to have to go through a general plan update. And that general plan and E I R will have to evaluate and should evaluate our vacant lots and ideas of how we want to use them so that they're already entitled, so the developer can come in and be consistent with our general plan and actually have a project happen.
Thank you. Our first question from the audience will go to Mr. Scott. When talking about COVID-19, you all suggested plans to help businesses, but didn't mention anything about about protecting the health of the residents of Benicia. What plans do you have for that?
Well, we learned at the city council meeting the other night that we were running, and as Tom pointed out, we have some funds, some significant funds. I would put together at least a $500,000 grant that we would be able to help people who are facing eviction, people who are looking at needing funds for rent, for food, et cetera. I've partnered with Benicia Strong on ways to feed the hungry in our community. I think the city needs to be able to provide funds, just like we did on the loan program for our businesses, provide the same kind of tools to our residents. From my understanding, we have about 1,400 people in our community that are completely out of work. We need to be able to do things for them, including, as I noted, providing funds for our restaurants, funds for our retail establishments so that they can go in and spend that money locally.
All right, good, thank you. And Mr. Masinski.
Yeah, I think there's two, a two-pronged approach that we need to take to make sure that we can ensure our community's health kind of during our recovery from COVID and after the fact. I think actually some new recent studies have been released to show that it's not only just a physical health condition, but also there's mental health implications as well. So from the the mental health side, I think as a as a community and as a council, we can try to identify policies and areas and priorities to safely inform our community where they can safely recreate outside and what that means. Obviously, not large gatherings, but our our community has a lot of great public parks and access and making sure that our community members know how and when they can utilize that to try to get their mental well-being in order. I think the second piece related to the physical well-being of our community members is making sure that not only are, we have funds allocated to try to help our community that needs it on a one-off kind of grant basis, but also equip equipping our fire and police officers with, you know, masks as well as informational material. Because I'll tell you, I've walked around town a lot and seen people that just don't understand how to even use P P. So I think there's a learning gap there.
Thank you. And Mr. Campbell.
Could you repeat the question? I want to make sure I I've got the right.
When talking about COVID-19, you all suggested plans to help businesses, but didn't mention anything about protecting the health of the residents of Benicia. What plans do you have for that?
Okay, you know, that's what I thought we were talking about there. Well, you know, the face mask, the mandatory face mask ordinance we put in place there, that's one thing we have to keep enforcing and not let up on. You know, that's what's happened to a lot of states and a lot of countries. They they started to back off. They thought that the coronavirus was over and then lo and behold, of course, it wasn't. And education, you know, we have to be educating the populace that, you know, besides, you know, the social distancing, face mask, washing your hands, you know, you you also have to keep large gatherings from not happening. Eighty-six percent, eighty-six percent of the cases we have in Benicia have happened after the face mask ordinance was put in place. Or it was 25 when it was put in place on June 16th. Now it's 179. And the, darn, I ran out of time. I was going to say, you know, our public health director in Solano County said the biggest problem right now is social gathering.
We did run out of time, so. Yeah, thank you. We have to pause for a sec to get our, for the coordinators to get our time schedules together. Gail and Susan, it looks to me like we should be starting closing statements.
Yes.
Is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah, thank you. All right, so we have run out of time and we'll go now to closing statements in the reverse order. So we begin with the mistress. There was opening statements. Hold on a sec here, I'm sorry. Closing statements, begin with Mr. Campbell.
Okay. Well, you know, as far as my my main thing, it's to try and bring us back out of this COVID recession. We're in a good spot. We have $9 million reserves, another $12 million in unassigned funds. So we got $21 million to work with and we have a plan. We went over it Tuesday night. And now I'm going to go off script a little bit, you know. And what I want to do is years ago, I did a campaign reform ordinance and back after the 2018 election, which is a pretty nasty election. You know, I got the council to redo a few things. And what I really want to do is, you know, Trevor and Terry, I want to say, you know, they run a clean campaign, they've done a really nice job. They deserve to be on the council. Granted, I like to think I deserve to be on it more. I'm not an idiot. Granted, I like to think I deserve to be on it more. I'm not an idiot. You know, I'm going to, you know, like completely, you know, say I like to see them on, said me. But I just want to thank them for, for doing that because you can see the difference between our level at the city council level versus the mayor's race, which is getting ugly and getting uglier almost by the day. And so for me, Trevor and Terry, I want to thank you. You, you, you're a credit to the community, you know. I hope if you don't get on it this time, because I'm still waiting for me to get on it, that you get on it at some point. You both have shown a passion for the community. You're both bright. You're both, you know, are quite capable and belong in the city council. And I just wanted to thank you for, for doing that, for, you know, doing, you know, a nice campaign and showing, you know, you're, you're bright and you deserve everything that goes your way. Thank you.
I think the timer started at three minutes. It should only have been two, I believe.
Well, I, I'm done.
All right, great. Thank you. Next is Mr. Scott. No? Right, hold on a sec.
I think it's me. It's all right.
Oh, wait a second. We have to get our timing together.
Oh.
Isn't it two minutes for the closing statements? No, three minutes? Okay, excuse me.
I'm only going to use, I'm only going to use two. I gotta get.
Two minutes closing.
All right.
For the closing, okay.
All right, so, well, I'm sure everyone out there has heard a lot of discussion tonight. I appreciate everybody kind of connecting in. I want to, hopefully folks that don't know anything about me have been able to learn a little bit about me. So in closing, I just want to thank everybody for hosting this forum. I think any way that we can connect with our community members is helpful to try to get an understanding of who we are as people and what we'd like to try to help our city achieve. As Tom mentioned, you know, we're, we're all volunteers and we're doing this for the right reasons to try to help. So in closing, I just want to let you know that I have a vision for our community. I have a vision for one where we're going to try to build on our historic roots as a community, where we can try to attract some high-paying jobs in town that can support our local businesses out of this. I want to make sure that there's a great education system. I've got three kids and that's going to be a big priority for me. And I want to make sure that my kids' kids want to live in Benicia. One of the great things that attracted me to this community was actually the fact that there's multi-generational families that still exist in the Bay Area and they're right here in our town. But don't get me wrong, this is not going to be an easy task. We have some hard times in front of us and it's going to take some creativity and new ideas to try to help position our city to respond to the health and economic challenges that are in the coming months. So I'm not afraid of hard work if people know me, and so I'm willing to step up and try to help lead our community through this hard time. And so we can hopefully bounce back stronger because during this time, we will learn something new and it will make us better. So I promise to you that I will always listen to your voices, always fight for what is best for Benicia, and I hope that I can earn your vote this November. So my name's Trevor Masinski and I'm running for Benicia City Council. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And Mr. Scott, you get to wrap it up.
All right, I'm going to wrap it up. First off, I want to say thank you, Tom. From one old guy to another, thank you very much because I was jotting down notes as the question was coming up and I, and I came up with the first two words that this whole forum has been respectful. It has been insightful and it has been issue-oriented. And I thank Trevor and I thank you, Tom, for having a campaign that has basically been at a very high level. We have stuck to issues. We have talked in, using social media. We have kept it at a high plane. From my perspective, as a grandparent, one of the key things that I want to leave with the voters is that I believe that I have a legacy to leave and that legacy is of a clean environment, of clean air and clean water. As a member of the community, I have a legacy to continue to maintain the historic values and the, and the core values of our community. A, a, as a businessman, I look at the opportunities that we have in our community and say, we can do better, we can do more. We have a, a Play-Doh, going back to my toy business days. We are a bunch of Play-Doh. We just need to form it right and get it into the right areas. My, my vision is very simple, is to have Benicia be the best it can be and look at it from a different perspective. There's all sorts of ways to look at answers, but I look at it as saying, why? Why are we doing these things? And then finally, as I said in the beginning, we're only as good as the people who we listen to and the ability to understand how we listen. And so I think that that's the most important thing, listening. And that's what I will do if you let me, the city council.
That's it. Thank you. You, thank you all very much for your time and your being very informative, focusing on the issues and ending on time. Hard to believe that. So we, Gail, I guess over to you. One last thing, so we will, there were a number of questions that we did not have time to answer from the audience. We will send you those questions and any replies you make, we will post on our website. Thank you.
On behalf of the League of Women Voters, the A U W in Carquinez Village, I would like to thank all of you candidates for taking time here to be here tonight. Running for office is difficult and we admire anyone who is really willing to run and serve their community by being an elected official. Please reach out to the candidates if you have additional questions or concerns. I would also encourage you to use Voters Edge, California League website that has nonpartisan information about the candidates, propositions, and measures. Go to votersedge.org, type in your street address and your zip code to find your candidate choices. The recording of this forum will be posted on the League Web, League of Women Voters Solano County's YouTube channel with a link on our website. The copyright for this forum belongs to the League of Women Voters of Solano County, which reserves all rights to the recording of this format. No portion of this content of this format forum, sorry, may be reproduced or otherwise used without prior written consent from the League of Women Voters. No portion of this recording may be used to promote one candidate or oppose another in any way. Additionally, no portion of this forum may be used to imply that the League of Women Voters endorses any candidate. If the recording of this forum is to be used, it must be used in its entirety. We felt very strongly that we did not want the pandemic to prevent voters from learning about the candidates who are running for office. A virtual event such as this is complicated and takes a great deal of time and effort to create. There are many people behind the scenes that made today's forum happen. We would like to thank Niles Metters, Julie Hartford, Sandy Curry, Craig Patterson, Rami Muth, Ally Desiderio. I said it wrong again. Desiderio, there. Our timer, Barbara Hausmann, our chat manager, Susan Newhouse, our technical coordinator and president of Carquinez Village. We will welcome your feedback and hope you will take a moment to leave a comment in the chat box on YouTube. This information will help us to know the aspects of the forum that worked well and where we can improve. Thank you for attending and remember that democracy is not a spectator sport. Make a plan and vote on or before November 3rd. Thanks.
Thanks, everybody.
Thanks, everybody. Thank you. Thank you all.